We'll start with roll call. Mike Bullier.
Mike Bullier, Hebron.
Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon, Hebron.
Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti, Hebron.
Kirsten Erlinson.
Kirsten Erlinson, Andover.
Pam Farrington. Carrie Farlino. Drew Golfin. Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Amy Romancheck.
Amy Romancheck, Marlboro.
Scott Soyet.
Scott Soyet, Andover.
Brianna Arupoku. She's not coming today. And Heather Summer from Hebron. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I think most of us are aware about the tragedy that the Ram family suffered over the weekend. Eric Brooker, who was a freshman, passed away in a motorbike accident. And earlier in the week, we also lost a 2024 graduate. So if we could just take a moment of silence. Thank you.
So I just want to thank you, Heather, for starting off the meeting with a moment of silence to recognize Eric and our recent graduate. And certainly, it's been a tragic, some tragic events. It's been a difficult day for Ram students and staff. You know, the losses are being felt across our school community. I just want to let the board know and the public know, obviously, we remain focused on ensuring that students and staff have the support that they need in order to be successful and in order to make sure that they can keep doing what they need to do for students. And I also just want to make sure I again reiterate the importance of if families are feeling like their students need additional support, we are fully prepared to provide that support. And to that end, I just want to thank the teachers and the staff and the administrative team, our partners at AHM Youth and Family Services for the support that they provided to students and each other today. It was a very, very difficult day. And we got through it, but we got through it because of the people who were here to help us get through it. And I know it's not over, we're going to continue to struggle. But I appreciate everything that people did, so just wanted to say that, appreciate it.
Okay, that brings us to public comment. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at board public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the board may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the board is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the board is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. I've asked Gabe Marks to be the timekeeper for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment?
Aaron Edberg, Andover, Connecticut.
Go ahead.
So my name is Aaron Edberg, my friends call me Kay. As a recently separated employee and taxpayer, I've decided to join this meeting as well as future meetings to speak. I further will be creating a Facebook page so the public can begin to understand the waste that I see day in and day out during my time, that I saw during my time at Ram. I believe since COVID, the general public, parents and community have lost interest in what has become a runaway train of spending by the colossal failure of a board and the superintendent to the tune of millions of dollars. Families are struggling, where is the humanity? Today, I am asking why, when I spent countless days performing maintenance tasks in the main office of the high school, I watched secretaries on the phone for hours, why we needed to bill the taxpayers for four more new security guards? Are the secretaries too busy to answer the intercom? Where's the oversight? When some of their phone calls ended, they would say, I'm going to lunch. This was day after day, not just one day, I was in there changing light fixtures for weeks at a time. Our solution to mismanagement is to hire more people? And why has $40,000 slipped out the door under everyone's nose, but our business manager has time to worry about other schools' lunch programs? Let's stop our bleeding first. Why did we need a second full-time middle school receptionist all summer? When the one we have spends 50% of her time running around playing interior decorator? I believe we need to reignite the public interest in attending these meetings and asking these questions. As a taxpayer, I plan on doing just that. This is a runaway train with no oversight. It is time to trim the fat, and I look forward to speaking at the next meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Sure.
Ethan Spinell. Is it on? Oh, alright, 22 Rivendell Road. Last week, the Boys Cross Country Team celebrated our senior day. And we had a wonderful event on Tuesday, and I thought the board should know, as we recognize all of our seniors in our athletics, sometimes cross-country is overlooked. However, we had an earlier-than-usual senior day because we only have one meet at home this year. And our usual tradition is to celebrate that last home meet as our senior day. It was a great event after the meet. We had parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles up there to celebrate our five seniors. I do need to thank the parents, all the parents, for helping organize the food and making sure it got there on time while I was running around trying to organize the meat. I need to thank Tim Landry, who helps me pick out gifts for kids in the school store. I pay him for them, don't worry, they're not donations. And I do need to thank Eileen Lestrina, one of the manufacturing teachers, who helps me personalize the gifts just by lettering their names on each of them. She really gives her own time to help me do that each year, so I want to recognize that. But overall, it was a great day, we have a long season ahead of us, and I just thought the board should know that it was a really wonderful event, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comment? Okay. Alright. Are there any items that we need to add or delete to the agenda? We're good, okay. And brings, oh, the student representative report.
Hey, recently, we've had our open house on Wednesday, September 10th, welcoming new students and parents. Seniors are also now preparing for college and other applications, you know, working up for jobs with the recent, I mean, the upcoming workshop this Friday. And we've had our sports startup again, cross-country, girls and boys soccer, our girls volleyball team, and our football team. Volleyball and soccer both played games today, and last Friday, we had our boys' football team play in a away game in Rhode Island last Friday.
Okay, great, thank you. And so the board chair report. I was able to attend the convocation, which I've done in the past, I really like it, it's a lot of fun. There was a really great video. That was really enjoyable. The service teachers received their service awards during it. Also, Colin will speak about it a little bit later, had two new awards this year that he'll go into detail on. It was really great, I know it's in the middle of the day or the beginning of the day, and it's hard for some board members to get there, but if you ever have the opportunity to go, it's well worth it. Went to the open house. This is the beginning of my lasts, so that would be my last open house for my kids. We followed the student's schedule. Little flashback with the bells ringing and having to get up and find the next classroom. But there was also a lot of exposure to some of the clubs and activities that students can get involved in, so that was really great. I don't know that my daughter thought that when I went home and said, well, why aren't you doing this? So, you know, she's like, oh. And the last thing I wanted to remind the board members of, the CAPE CAPS convention is November 21 through 22 in Mystic. The 21st is a full day, and the Saturday is a half-day, so if you can go, the sessions are really well worth it. And Jessica in Colin's office can help you out with that.
It was great last year.
It was really good.
Yep, just, I can have, Jess has pushed out a couple of emails about that, I think, to board members, but you could get one more, but we are getting down to the point where we've got to get registration sent in, so I'll have her send another note out. You know, obviously, as I said earlier, it's been a very challenging day. I will say, with the exception of what we've been dealing with over the past 24 hours, it's been a really positive start to the school year. You know, you mentioned convocation, we had a lot of fun making that video. Not going to show it at a board meeting, just kind of in the cone of silence, for some reasons.
So now we have something to hold over.
Yeah, 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 so, but if board members are interested in seeing it, I could arrange a private viewing. But some of the administrators said, hey, could I get a copy of that video? I want to show it to my spouse and my, I was like, it doesn't go anywhere. Judge your spouse. Michael Sarusi was a star, where's Michael? He was, he was.
That was really good.
He was a star, that was fantastic, even my kids.
I was the only one you guys drank.
Even my 20-year-old kids, when I showed it to them, they go, oh my gosh, that guy was hysterical. So, but I think, again, convocation, you know, I've really tried to make it be a positive, uplifting, good way to start the school year, and I was really happy, as I think that, you know, we were able to achieve that this year, and I appreciate everybody's involvement in it. You know, just a couple of things to share as far as other positive notes that, you know, Kirsten, you had mentioned not having access to the home field, I know that has been a challenge for you, for our student athletes who are not having the, as many experiences on our home field, but we are progressing.
We're at the tail end of it.
We're on time and we're looking good, we started, Eva sent me a picture earlier today.
It's turning red.
It's turning red, magically before eyes, but it looks really good. And so we are, we are optimistic that, you know, in about basically two weeks, the beginning of October, we'll be able to provide access to our student athletes to get on there and start utilizing it. So hopefully those away trips won't be quite as frequent in the coming weeks. I do want to mention, just and thank the board, there, we do have some new positions in the district this year through the board support, and I wanted to thank the board for these new positions because they have been really, really well-received, our safety officers, we did hire four safety officers. I am hearing from the administrators and I've heard from teachers and staff how positive of a, it's a great change. I think people feel comfortable, people appreciate the fact that there are, you know, safety, security personnel who are keeping an eye on things like door access technology and, you know, doing things like patrolling the hallways and patrolling the perimeter of the building. And then, and in a day like today, when we knew that there was going to be media coverage here, kind of lurking in the background, we, they helped keep those reporters, they're here, they're a presence to make sure that those reporters don't come on a school ground. So it's, I just, again, heard great feedback about those positions and just wanted to let the board know that. And then another position that has really benefited student athletes is the fact that we now have our own athletic trainer. For the past year and a half, we have had inconsistent people, like one person one day, another person another day, and it's just been this revolving door. We've had athletic training needs being met, but it's been piecemeal. And having a full-time employee who is in that position has just been advantageous for our student athletes, coaches, and obviously, that's what we're looking to do, is we're looking to put things in place that benefit our students. So I wanted to mention that as well. There's just a couple of technical things that I need to share as a part of my report. We did make some changes to board policies. And in accordance with Board Bylaw 9311, I have to just report about those updated policies. The board has already been informed about these changes via email, these are policies that are either cleanup, where you're cleaning up some things that just need to be cleaned up, whether it's the numbering of the policy, whether it's wording of things, or it's either legislatively driven and being recommended by our attorneys. So those policies are a green, it's really exciting stuff, green cleaning policy has been updated. It was in the 3000 series, which is business, it was moved to a 1000 series, which is community, and it's a more appropriate location to put it, and we've made some minor adjustments in language to align the legislative changes. We had a policy for pesticide application, it also used to be in the business section of the 3000s, now it's in the community section, again, it's a more appropriate location. And we did make some housekeeping changes to that policy. We also took two policies, our state school climate plan and our bowling policy, and as we were required to do by legislation, we merged those two, and now we have a Connecticut school climate policy, which is in the student section. We also have two other policies from the student section, which is 5125. We updated our confidentiality and access to student educational records, as well as Policy 5530, student privacy. Both of those changes were legislatively driven and recommended by our school board attorney. So wanted to make sure I did follow through on the bylaw and report that out at a board meeting. So that concludes my report.
Good. So that will bring us to the student program spotlight.
Alright, so I, I guess, just keep going, so as Heather mentioned in her comments, we did make some changes, or I should say additions, to convocation this year. The first one is, we did recognize a Ram or Region Eight Teacher of the Year. So before joining the district, I was very aware of the strong reputation that the district has as being one of the best school districts in the state. And we wanted to make sure that we were doing things to recognize the teachers and staff who make us that great. And brought the Teacher of the Year into the district. The program, the Connecticut program dates back to 1952 and is meant to honor and recognize teachers from each school districts in the state. Where you identify one Connecticut, one teacher in your district each year. The idea of identifying a teacher for Ram isn't just about honoring one individual, it's about recognizing the incredible work happening in every classroom and across both of our schools by shining a spotlight on what, on one teacher each year. We're really celebrating the profession as a whole, the collective effort, creativity, and commitment that define our district. My hope is that this recognition will serve as a reminder to all of us that the work we do matters, it is valued, and it makes a lasting impact on student lives. This is the first time Region Eight has participated in the Teacher of the Year program. Our faculty nominated 14 outstanding educators from their district to be considered as the District Eight Regional School District Eight Teacher of the Year. These nominations went to our Teacher of the Year Committee, which was facilitated by Mary Rose Mead, and I appreciate the work that she did with facilitating that committee. It was, the committee was composed of equal representation of teachers from the middle school and the high school, as well as members from each department. It was this committee of teachers who worked to identify our Region Eight Teacher of the Year and who will act now as our representative this year, representing the many exemplary teachers in our district. I'm excited to begin this new tradition at Ram, and I look forward to it being one of the many ways we recognize and celebrate the excellence and dedication of our staff. With all that being said, I would like to now ask Dr. Michael Sarusi, our middle school principal, to the podium to introduce our Teacher of the Year.
I'll maybe shorten my speech. It was about five pages.
I suggested.
So I have the distinct honor of introducing Region Eight's first Teacher of the Year Award recipient this evening. Our Ram Teacher of the Year has been in the district for quite some time. I have always been impressed with him since I started here 17 years ago. What impressed me the most is how this person is able to build a strong rapport with his students and is often the teacher they turn to for support and guidance when needed. Students frequently have commented to me and others how much they enjoy his class, finding both interesting and challenging. He is a person who has forged strong ties to the school community and consistently goes above and beyond for his students, for us, and the community at large. Colleagues have noted that the Veterans Day Program at Ram Middle School wouldn't happen without this person. He brings home the importance of the service of veterans to every student and staff member. More importantly, it's a day that veterans feel valued and heard, and it's coming up, I believe, on November 10. He has received many accolades from his work, but most importantly, he is recognized as having a kind and compassionate soul. He is always willing to help others when needed. For over 25 years, this person has been and continues to be an extremely dedicated and respected educator and individual. It is my honor to introduce Mr. Carl Janses as Region Eight's Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, I'll try to keep it short, which is not my strong suit, as a Soul Says teacher. One of the things that we think about as educators is the idea that it's a calling. You know, much like nurses and military personnel, and, you know, usually I'll follow that up with a snarky comment about why we don't get paid enough, because people call it the calling. But today was one of those moments where you see that. I saw a lot of teachers who were struggling with the loss of a student. And, you know, you see it behind the scenes when we're in the teacher's lounge and we're talking, and the ability of the teachers to support one another, and then for those teachers to go out and support students, even though they themselves are in pain, was one of those clear shining moments where you don't understand the depth of the love that these teachers have for their job and for their students until a moment like this happens. So even in the midst of tragedy, I saw some wonderful moments of love and compassion from this staff. And I know as a board, you don't often get to see the trenches of the teachers. You know, if I have anything else to say, it's that you have a staff here that is amazing. So we appreciate every support that you give us, thank you.
So we have another recipient that we're going to introduce to you in a second, but before we do, I wanted to give some context to the Claire Hand Kindness Award, which is in our agenda as an award that's being recognized tonight. I wanted to give you a context, some background and meaning to the award. So Claire was a custodian who worked for the district starting in 1975 after she graduated from Ram High School. She was very well-known for showing her kindness to everyone that she encountered each day when she came to work. Our teachers and staff could attest to the fact that she used to come in sometimes a couple hours early before she actually started her shift, and she would circulate and visit everybody, and just check in and say hi, and how you doing, and just spreading her kindness everywhere she went. When she retired last year, I had intended, my plan was to actually, she retired in the middle of the school year, and my plan was to invite her to this year's convocation so that we could all show her our love and appreciation for the contribution she made to the district, as well as for that kindness that she showed. But unfortunately, Claire passed away unexpectedly last spring, shortly after her retirement. Even with her class, or even with her passing, I felt it was important to recognize her at convocation and to keep her legacy alive, her kindness legacy alive in the district. And to that end, we decided to create an annual award to recognize a member of the Ram staff who displays the kindness that Claire was known for. So the recipients of this award will embody traits such as empathy, patience, helpfulness, positivity, graciousness, fairness, and humility, to name a few. Their kindness is not occasional or situational, but rather a constant presence that lifts morale, builds trust, and simply demonstrates kindness to everyone that they encounter. And I think, again, people who are here that know Claire, that's who she was, and that's what she was about. While we have every intention of having a nomination process, nomination and selection process for this award in future years, because of the timing of her passing, we weren't able to do that this year. But we wanted to make sure, but I really felt it was important to recognize someone at this year's convocation. So we thought about the kindness that we, the administrative team and I talked a lot about the kindness that we saw in Claire, and we identified a recipient for this year who we feel displays those attributes every day when they come to work here at Ram. And at this time, I would like to invite Mary Rose Mead to the podium to introduce the recipient of the first-ever Claire Hand Kindness Award.
Good evening. Claire was one of the first people to welcome me to the Ram family when I was a young teacher in the 90s. And that is what we are, we are a family. And Heather, I appreciate you using that word because it is what makes Ram a very special place, and it's what makes days like today very bearable. It was my honor to be able to present the first Claire Hand Kindness Award at our convocation to Eduardo Mateo, an individual who, like Claire, always seeks to help wherever he can. He genuinely cares about people around him, he checks in to see how we're doing, and when he asks how you are doing, he genuinely listens and cares about your answer. And he listens always with empathy and with kindness. He also shares his humanity and his joys and his sorrows with a trust that is at the heart of our family. He's filled numerous roles, and like Claire, he doesn't seek attention or commendation, he just steps up and steps in to make all of our paths smoother. For this reason, he was selected as the first recipient for the Claire Hand Kindness Award. Congratulations, Eduardo, please stand and be recognized by the Board of Education.
So what we, so at convocation, both Carl and Eduardo received a token of our appreciation and recognition of receiving their award. We also actually had plaques made that actually are hanging now in central office. And one plaque is for Teacher of the Year, the other plaque is for the Kindness Award recipient. And each year, the person who is recognized for those things, their name will be added to that plaque, and it will be, stay in central office. So I appreciate Carl coming in tonight. Carl's certainly no stranger to everybody he's presented to us on many occasions at board meetings, which we appreciate. And Eduardo, I appreciate you being here tonight as well. I also promised them both that they did not need to feel compelled to stick around for the rest of the board meeting after they were recognized. So, thanks, guys, we appreciate you coming in, certainly Steve would like to, but no pressure, no pressure at all.
So I love to say, I was sitting in the convocation watching these rewards get announced and listening, and the one thing that struck me that I shared with Colin was the teachers were all whispering, trying to figure out who was, you know, they were listening to what was behind this award, how it was determined. And you could see them kind of saying, do you think it's this person, do you think it's that person? Which, to me, you know, showed that they valued it, and then when they announced both, you know, your names, the auditorium erupted, people were like, yeah, that was like the right person. So it was really, it was great to watch. Okay. Back to business. We're at item nine, the consent agenda, we, it is enclosure 9.1 in your packet, it's the approval of minutes from the August 18th. It's the approval of minutes from the August 18th, 2025 regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Scott Soya.
Scott Soya, a second.
Go ahead.
Gabe Marks. Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Okay. That brings us to new and unfinished business.
Yeah, sure. So I'll just jump right in. So for 10.1, we just entitled it State Required Superintendent Reports. So the administrative team and I are all together too familiar with updated, in updates in legislation that are, we are informed about each and every school year coming out of every legislative session. And one of those changes this year were three reports that are now required annually, or at least at the time being, because these things change certainly from week to week or month to month. But the state is now requiring that the superintendent report to the board information about attrition, workforce development programs, and community-based organizations providing support services to students in the district. So there's three memos in your, in your board packet. The first one is enclosure 10.1. It's a memo from Amanda Craven, our Human Resources Generalist, to me, and it provides a list of staff who left their positions during the 2024-2025 school year, tried to compartmentalize them by more administrative/leadership positions and then teaching positions, paraeducators, and other people in that group. And then we moved into some non-union, unaffiliated, and admin assistant and custodial positions. So that report is there. I could certainly take any questions if anybody has any.
Seems like a fairly large number to me. Is this somewhat typical or is this?
I don't see it as being a large number. I don't. You're talking about, again, from a teaching perspective, you're talking about five positions out of 140. That's, I think, 3%. We don't like turnover, obviously. We try to avoid it whenever we can, you know. But again, I don't, I don't personally feel like we have a significant turnover in this district.
What's the total employment of that district?
I can tell you that teachers is 100, well, as of last year, because I got these numbers earlier today, 140 teachers and 41 paraeducative positions were in the district last year. There were some clerical positions, but again, just those are the two largest groups. I can give you the specific amount inclusive of paraeducators and non-union, unaffiliated, and clerical staff and custodial staff. I can certainly provide that to the boards.
Mostly just curious.
Sure. Sure, I will go on to the next one. The next one is 10.1B. This is a information about our workforce development programs. The memo that I provided, it has a high level of detail. I won't read. Everybody here is capable of reading, and I certainly won't reread them. When we looked at the language of what was required to be reported out on, where we landed was really, we have two programs that I would qualify as workforce development programs. The first one is our Work Experience Program that's designed to help students with disabilities gain employable skills, like skill, you know, confidence, real-world exposure to jobs. We have job coaches go out into programs where these, I'm sorry, where the students are working and support them so that they can learn some skills that make them employable. And it's a great program. On average, about eight to 10 students per year participate in this program. It's really rewarding. There's a lot of local businesses that support this program. We have CBS, we have Culver Village, things like Flower Girl, Gina Marie's, AHM Youth and Family Services, Kindarama here at Ram. So it's a great program for our students who are involved with it. And the second one is our Manufacturing for Industry course, which is a part of our youth manufacturing pipeline initiative. It's a two-class course, so it's only taught one semester of the year, it's taught second semester, but it's a double period, so it actually counts as a full year credit. And essentially, again, it really is designed to build the skills and abilities for students to leave the program and have employable skills working in the manufacturing field. It's a great program and we're super proud of it here. So I can certainly happily try to take any questions. We have, oh, and we have about 13 students who signed up to take the class next semester. Certainly take any questions. Not hearing any, I'll move on to the last one. So the last one is community-based organizations providing support services to the students in the district. This is an important partnership that we have today is clearly demonstrates the importance of that partnership, and it's with AHM Youth and Family Services. You know, in the wake of getting a phone call last night from Penny about the tragedy that happened yesterday, I spoke to the administrative team, I spoke to Penny, I spoke to Christine Hartwig, Michael Sarusi. My next phone call was to Tressa Giordano from AHM. And she said, and she was driving home on the Merritt Parkway, coming home from Long Island, it was 10 o'clock at night, and she said, I'll be there at 6:45 tomorrow morning to be a part of the meeting. They provide tremendous services outside, obviously, of things like that, you know, in helping out with dealing with crises that take place in the district. They also provide staffing that work. We have a counselor that works in the middle school, counselor that works at the high school. They do a ton of programs for our students and which are incredibly beneficial to them. So AHM is the community-based organization that provides the supports to our students. I will happily take any questions if people have any. If not, I have fulfilled my state required reports for this.
All right. That brings us to 10.2, discussion related to bonding timeline and proposed projects. It's, again, enclosure 10.2 in your packet.
So I'll start off, and then I would certainly invite, you know, Mike, if you'd like to jump in and kind of provide some context and, you know, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, we had a Joint Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting. During last budget season and in the previous budget season and the previous budget season, I have talked each year that I've been here about the fact that we are, each year, we're getting closer and closer to the need to look at making some significant investments in the districts with regards to facilities and infrastructure. And we continue to get closer to that. And really achieving what we need to achieve in the time period that we're going to have, that we're going to need to get those things done, we really are not going to have a choice other than bonding out projects and to finance those projects. And so during the summer, Eva was great and arranged a meeting with representatives from UNISTAT. It is a company that helps school districts and municipalities go through the bonding process. They kind of give timelines and they support school districts going through that process. The other side of the process is working with legal representation who has a strong understanding of it and making sure that we dot every i and cross every t from a legal perspective, because it is a very spelled-out prescriptive process that we have to go through, and we can't make any missteps when we're going through that process. The first few pages of enclosure 10.1 is a document that was provided to us by UNISTAT that really would be, could be applicable to any year. It provides a timeline of kind of the steps that would need to be taken and the approximate timeline when they would need to be taken in. So you could see, again, I'm not going to read the entire document, but you can see it spells out, you know, what we would need to do, you know, in a meeting in January. We would have to set dates for public hearings to be held and, you know, and refer projects to planning and zoning in the town where the district is, where the projects is located. And, you know, just go through that process. And again, there are some places where it says 2026, but I want everybody to understand it's, this could be applicable in any year. It could, you know, we could do it this year, we could do it next year, we could do it the year after that. It spells out that timeline. And we had a representative from UNISTAT be present at the meeting to kind of provide some, not just with Eva, but when we met with Facilities and Finance the other week. And again, the more I hear it, the better it is for me, because I have to hear some things tied, you know, quite a few times to have a real good understanding of it. And moving on, on page three, it provides some information about current district debt. An important context to have when we consider the bonding process is when we will have our debt paid off from the construction project for the high school. And I think that's at the end of, not this year, but the end of next year. There you go. So that's at the end of 2027. And that's an important component to think about because, again, I think we need to have a lot of conversation around this, but I think from a strategic standpoint, we would best be served if we could essentially complete our payment on our current debt and essentially then just assume any payment on new bonding that we end up having to do. That, I think, is a more seamless way to do it from a budgeting perspective. That way, we don't have a dip in our budget and then a spike in our budget a year or two later if we delay the bonding process. I just, I think that that's something that we need to think about. And then the last page of that enclosure is a, just some proposed bonding projects. One of the things that I will point out, but I'm sure that board members noted it when they looked at their packet, is there are not dollar amounts associated with these projects. Because we would have to go through a process of having, having these projects costed out by us. They actually have organizations and companies that are, I think they're called cost estimators. And we would have to secure their, secure their services and say to them, we need you to give us cost estimates for these, for these, because, you know, even if we were given a price tag on some of these projects a year or two ago, they would be out of date and wouldn't line up. And I think it's critically important that as a board, we don't really, we don't give a number until we know what that number is going to be. Because if we start saying, oh, well, this is going to cost us this number of millions of dollars, and then that number changes at any point in the process, I think that, I think it will, could potentially hurt public trust that they have in the board, right? So that's, we don't have any numbers associated. What we did include on this list of projects, Michael Schleyhoffer, who is here on the meeting virtually and can certainly answer questions if board members have them, is the current age of the item. And then we also included the estimated life expectancy of the projects. And you could see at some of our bigger ticket items where you have high school roof replacement, middle school roof replacement, we have things like solar system, we have things like boilers and chillers, which we've talked about a lot. We are really, we are really at or past the life expectancy of these things. And I think the board needs to really be strategic in how we approach this. We do know that some of our neighboring towns are going to be, likely going to be going out to bonding. There are some needs in, that I know of in Marbury, there are some needs that I know of in Hebron that I want to make sure that we are strategic in the timeline and the process that we utilize to go to bonding, because I don't, we have to do what we have to do in the best interest of the district. We have to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position where we are 30 years at some of these things, and now what we're doing is just, we're putting Band-Aids on everything that should have been replaced many, many years ago. So hopefully I captured the conversation.
Yeah, well, I'm out of things to say.
Yeah.
I mean, all I would say is that the systems that we're considering replacement are telling us that it's time. It's not just simply, we're hitting a 20-year timeframe. A normal roof would be replaced after 20 years. We're starting to see roof leaks. We've had to actually pay for repairs. I think there was a bathroom that had a leak where the two bathrooms back to back had to be repaired. So it turned into quite a costly repair. We'd rather avoid those repairs and be proactive to get out in front of some of these larger items that could cost you significant investment to repair other adjacent systems. So that's really the approach. It's a guideline, right? These life terms that are defined by the manufacturer or by the industry. So I think we use some of the data that's been collected, right, the monitoring, the health of those systems, and we use that information to establish an appropriate threshold for what's included in the list. But it's unfortunately not things that we can afford to pay for out of our existing budget, so bonding becomes necessary. And I think one of the other things about bonding that's interesting is that we can establish a profile for that payback as well, which is something that I learned when we had discussions with UNISTAT. So if we look at towns within the district that are considering bonding, based on the timing of our bonding activity, perhaps there's a way that we can dovetail some of the paybacks such that the impact is not that great to some of the, to the contributing towns.
Yeah, I'll say Eva and I were kind of watching the news this afternoon, seeing, because I'm looking out my window and I'm seeing a reporter out my window, and then I'm watching on TV at the same time. It was a very good thing. But one of the news stories that came up was, I won't give the name of the district, but it's a relatively close in proximity district that is trying to do a bombing project of $240 million. And the reason that that district is where they are, it's because they need to basically redo all of their elementary schools. And the reason they are where they are right now is because they haven't done their due diligence. And I'm not saying it's anybody's individual's fault, but they haven't done their due diligence of upkeeping their building along the way, or their buildings along the way. And as a result, they've got a huge, just a huge price tag that I think is going to be hard for taxpayers to swallow, a $240 million bombing. And obviously, we're a ways from that, but I just, I think that, you know, it's important to think about, you know, being timely and being strategic, because we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where this list is only going to grow over time, right? It's just going to get longer and longer, the more that needs, or the further we go beyond those life expectancy of things. You know, I think the Facility and Finance Committee talked about, you know, this being such an important topic because it is so significant, is to look at potentially having a special meeting, right? To plan a special meeting where this is the one topic of conversation. You know, we could potentially have somebody from UNISTAT come in and talk to the board as a whole and kind of walk through that process and give an opportunity for timelines to be provided and questions to be answered. We could certainly engage with Matt Ritter and have, Matt is an attorney who really specializes in this process, and he would be the one that we work with to navigate the legal aspects of it. That is something that we, as a combined facilities finance subgroup, said this is probably the next step, because obviously, this is an agenda item for, you know, a board meeting with a lot of other agenda items, but really, it's important that there's just some focused conversation on that. So, you know, that's, I think, what we are going to be looking to try to accomplish as a next step with regards to the bonding process. It's a lot to digest, so.
It is, yeah. And I wish we could say, here's what we think it'll cost, but we really have no idea until that pricing, that cost estimating is done and we can figure out what is the total sum of what we're looking to execute.
And then, you know, looking at funding for the cost of the cost estimator and so, because it obviously.
Do you have a estimate on that?
We, I don't want to give a number and have.
Yeah, I don't know if we have.
Yeah, we don't.
It will require bonding. It will not require bonding.
That's good.
Well, the other thing that I'll say, just because I think it's important to say publicly at this meeting, is the fact that this list would be longer if we didn't use, strategically use our reserve funds to accomplish many, many things. Like think of the work that's been done in the fields. Think of the work that's being done right now in the track. If we didn't have, if we didn't strategically use the capital funds that we have available as well as the reserve funds that we have from any type of surplus from a previous year, this list would be longer and it would be more expensive. And, you know, so by doing things like the athletic field improvements, by doing things like the track resurfacing, by doing the things that we did to 316 North and South Fields, like this board has been very engaged and thoughtful about how we approach this. And even one of the things that we had thought about, and I won't even say, I don't know if it's on there or not, is we talked last year about the need to address the loading dock, and I talked about how in such disrepair it is. That might be on this list. Yeah, it is on the list. But if we address it this year, then it goes off, right? So, and we'll continue to try to do things like, because we can't delay things like that. So certainly take any questions for either Eva, myself, Michael Schleyhoffer's attending virtually, if anybody has.
There's a few things I'm hearing that are 23 years, I don't know, 40-year life expectancy. Are those things that we are seeing real problems with? I think one of them was that stairwell. The main street sidewalk, outdoor stairway, parking lot.
Yeah, so can I just chime in? So a lot of the, a lot of the.
So a lot of the, um, a lot of the concrete, um, is suffering cracks, crumbling. It's not part of the crumbling foundation or any of that, but, um, they are, they're just, there are problems and they're large areas. I don't know if you've come in through the main entrance of the high school, but it has been piecemealed. I don't want to exaggerate, but like a million times over. And to the point where it's questionable as far as ADA access through there because of the pitches going to the drains. So we're just like looking at replacing the entire, um, front entrance sidewalk. And then the sidewalk or the stairwell, I'm sorry, that goes from the back of the middle school, middle school to the high school. It's a double set of stairwell and the stairwell is actually sinking down, to the point where it needs to be removed and replaced. Or there was also the possibility of just eliminating it completely, as a cost savings measure, but that's a bigger discussion.
Do we have any sense of why something that's supposed to last 40 years is doing so badly at this point? I know 40 years is an estimate and it's kind of range, but.
I'm going to say lack of oversight during construction installation. A lot of the concrete was installed in the winter months. We moved in in February of, um, 2003. So temperature plays a big, big role on the curement process.
I have one other question. Was one of the lines in the table at the bottom, it's about eight or 10 from the bottom.
It's about the generator, right?
Yeah. My real question was just the, um, was not fully funding, uh, fully powered, possible new generator. So I, I, that's what it says, but it, it says state funding and over budget.
So the town of Hebron, Andover and Marlborough were looking into making us into a regional shelter. And they received state funding to power the whole facility. Unfortunately, the timing that we, or they received the funding to now, there's a gap because prices went up so significantly. So they're unable to provide full power to the whole facility. So they can do full power to the high school and leave the middle school as is currently, which is just emergency lights and power. Or whatever else might be needed for an emergency situation, just basically to get people out of the building.
Yeah, and, and part of the, part of the, I'll, I'll, I'll say problem with that really comes down to a matter of semantics. Um, and what I mean by that is when the applications were made, not, not by district staff. So the application for this grant was, was done by, by people from the town who were advocating for this project. We were supportive of it. But within the context of the application, they used Ram High School, Ram High School, Ram High School at, in, in the application documents. And, and, and when motions were made by the board, it was Ram High School. And, and the state basically said, it says Ram High School. It doesn't say Region 8, or it doesn't say Ram High School. And, and the, the feedback that the people from the town side said, we always just, we just call it Ram. It's just, to us, it's a single entity, right? And, and so that has made it challenging because we initially had gone to the state. I think we talked about this at the board meeting once. We had initially gone back to the state. We said, listen, can you support this, like, and, and provide additional funding? It doesn't seem likely that that's going to happen. And there is obviously a distinct advantage for both the middle school and the high school to be able to fully power in the event of a, a, a power loss. Because otherwise, we, we can't function as a school. We don't want to have to send out middle school students and staff home and say, see you later, you guys go home. But hey, the high school is getting a full day in. So, um, again, it's, it's, that's one of the reasons that's in there. We, and we've said all along, and certainly Mike's been a part of this conversation, we didn't, we didn't, this was, we didn't obligate any financial, um, resources towards, towards this project, so.
Yeah, so the district hasn't paid anything towards this. It's all through, through funding. It's the idea of expanding it to include the, the middle school. If it's beneficial to the district, then it's worth considering tying into the, into the system.
But is there any opportunity for the towns to contribute to that?
But that's a, that's a conversation that could happen, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, because the community takes advantage of the, of the shelter.
Well, that's just it. And I, you know, when I first heard the story, my reaction was, geez, you got us in here and kind of left us hanging.
Yeah, I mean, the, the biggest impact I would say is the capacity of the shelter itself, right? Which is just dedicated to the high school. Because you have to have, um, not, you have to have running water, you have to have toilets, you have to have lighting. You have to have, you know, electronic locks and, you know, control over all of the systems that, that exist. Otherwise, you cannot call it a shelter. So the disappointing side is limiting the, the size of the shelter itself to just the high school. In addition to that, you have to maintain all of your ADA access. So elevators would need to be working. You know, all the systems that, that support folks with disabilities. So it, it might be a wish list item, right? But it, it is something that we think we need to keep on the radar for, for consideration as we march toward bonding a larger group of tasks.
Anybody else have any more questions on the bonding timeline?
Like not anytime immediately, but I'm just like, I think we should. We have some board members coming on.
Yes, I think it should be after that. And then will we have, when do you think you're going to get the dollars?
So, well, we're going to have to, so that's part of the, what is going to be a part of that special meeting is we're going to need to make sure that we have adequate funding for it, which, correct me if I'm wrong, is going to end up requiring transfers and making sure that we have adequate funding. So we can work with a cost estimator company to get a rough idea of what it might be. It would be a rough idea. Then we have to make sure that since we don't have any of that funding currently budgeted, then we'd have to be at a time in the budget year, the current budget year to say, where Eva says, I feel comfortable allocating X amount of thousands of dollars to pay for that process. Because if I try to spend that money now, she slaps my hand. That happens actually quite often. She keeps me in check, so. So.
Can he sign the checks or?
There it is. They don't give me any of those responsibilities. So I, I, I think if we look to like a January-ish time period, we'll be in a better place for, for Eva to feel comfortable to say, hey, you know, we're, we're, you know, halfway through the school year. Here's what we're seeing. Here's what we're seeing. We may or may not have some surpluses and forward with, with engaging with a cost estimator. But again, part of the, that special meeting could be making sure that there are, are dollars in place in certain accounts that we can pay for that. And then a, a, a motion to allow us to do that.
So the, when we, in this, I don't know how the order goes, but I had alluded to this at the, at the finance meeting and facilities meeting that you guys had, is understanding like, if it's a roof, can we get the numbers on, or maybe Mike can do it, you know, or has it, how much have we fixed over the last five years? And what does that trend look like as we're asking taxpayers, you know, look, we got to replace all of these things. Here's what it's costing us to not fix them and it's trending in this, you know.
So it's a great point. That, that is part of what we talked about during the, the subcommittee meeting was to put together the justification for why, not just, hey, we're hitting a, a timeline. It's a timeline, right? I mean, your car may be designed the last 10 years, but maybe you can stretch a lot more out of it. And that's, that's a situation that I think we need to be in to both justify an action relative to a repair, but also substantiate the reason for it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I honestly think, um, we won't get it through a referendum if we don't do a really good storytelling of why we need it.
I agree. Yeah, I think, um, and we talked about this at the meeting, is, you know, making sure that people have a very clear understanding, this, this turns into a, a marketing campaign, right? And so making sure that people have that clear understanding of the reasons why we need to, to do this. What I would suggest, uh, from a, from a timeline perspective is it would practically make more sense if we did, if we had this special meeting prior to the January regular meeting when I present the regular budget. Because once that happens, like, that's what we have, we have to, once I present the regular budget, that's all we focus on for, for two months. So if we do something, you know, in the couple of weeks prior to that special meeting, I'm sorry, to the regular meeting, then, you know, maybe we find that we have funding for the cost estimator. We can engage with a, with a company. And then the period of time that we are going through our own regular budget process, maybe some of that cost estimation can, can be accomplished. I, I have no idea if the timeline of that is even feasible, but, but like I'm, from, in a, in a perfect world scenario, that might play out. And then we get through our own budget process and we can come back and visit them. And, and then we'll actually have some of that information maybe as we go through our regular budget process.
Okay.
All right.
All right, that brings us, anybody have anything else before I rush on? 10.3 is the discussion and possible action related to the RAM Administrative Association contract. It's enclosure 10.3 in your packet. Do we have, um, a motion to approve the 2026 to 2029 contract between the Regional School District 8, Board of Education and the RAM Administrators Association?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Amy Romanchuk? And any other discussion on the contract? We're good? Okay. All in favor?
I am not.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, motion passes. 10.4 is the first read of, uh, policies.
So just a, a couple of policies to go through as first reading standard. The first one is a current policy. It's 3550, gifts, grants and requests to the district. The, the, the primary changes, there's some minor language changes made to this policy. I brought it to the policy subcommittee, received some feedback from them. Within the context of the revised policy, there's some bullets on, on the bottom of page one and the back of page, and, and the top of page two. In the previous policy, a lot of those bullets were actually included within the regulation and not the policy. The policy was very brief and the regulation was, was quite a bit longer. Some feedback that I got from members of the policy subcommittee is that some of that regulation language was really more policy language. And so we made some adjustments. We took some, took some stuff out of the regs, put them into the policy, made a few minor adjustments to some of the language of, of the, of those bullets. And, and you have what is in front of you in the redline version today. I think that accurately captured Scott. All right, um, we could certainly take any questions if anybody has any.
I just noticed, I didn't notice before, is the, the last line of the regulation repeats the last line of the policy right now. We moved everything else, but probably just want to strike the last line of the regulation.
You got it. Strike that. Okay. Thank you, Scott. The next policy is 5128. This is actually a new policy that we're mandated by the state of Connecticut to adopt, is a restorative practices response policy. This kind of goes co, uh, this, this, the adoption of this policy coincides with that Connecticut safe, Connecticut school climate plan policy. So, um, uh, the language of this policy was provided to us by our, uh, uh, legal counsel through their policy, uh, model policy, um, services. And, um, I presented it to the, to the subcommittee and, and there was no questions or concern coming out of that. Certainly take any questions if anybody has any.
I just had a question. Like, how does this, um, like the staff, how does that, what's the rollout of that look like?
Yeah, so, so it's a great question. So, um, there, there were some things with regards to restorative practices that are actually, there's language in that Connecticut's school climate policy that talk about the fact that we have to have training materials, resources in restorative practices and utilize those things in district. And so that's a conversation that I've had with Mary Rose, who was our director of curriculum instruction. We want to make sure that we have those materials. We want to make sure that we offer that training. I mean, the reality is this, we use restorative practices in this district. It's, it's restorative practices, as I'm sure you know, are, are certainly nothing new. But it's codifying that in a policy as well. That's just a requirement coming out of that legislative change.
Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to 10.5, which is the financials.
Okay, so in your packet, enclosure 10.5A is the financial portion. So at the end of, Chris, end of August, right, August 31st, 2025, I have, uh, projected in net favor both position of $87,298. In coming up with that figure, we dug deep because we had, uh, staff movement again. With staff movement comes enrollment changes for benefits. In addition, from the time that the budget was set, we had open enrollment in May. So we, we turned over every rock, so we felt comfortable with that, that that is still available at this time. As the board is aware, we also budgeted 100% for magnet school and Boeck tuition for this year. And the state, um, said that we're still at the 52%. I feel comfortable, once we know what the enrollment is on October 1st, to relinquish more money. So it'll be a little bit more. So the cost estimator might be sooner rather than later, but I just wanted to share that information. So the capital improvement fund is currently that, so that fund at the Reserve for Education is currently where the track replacement is being charged. And as you could see, if anyone noticed today, we are on time. The track has the asphalt portion of it has been laid. I guess it's a rubber mixture. And now we're painting it red. So I'm learning a lot and it's very pretty looking. That's all I know. The reserve fund for educational expenditure fund, that's where our 2% surplus goes into from the prior year. That is working on the ADA compliance for the middle school baseball field. We've had some punch list items that need to be finalized before we can close out that project. So they are in the process of working around our current athletic schedule and school schedule to try to get that work accomplished. Are there any questions that the board may have? Okay, so hearing none, we'll move on. So the 10.5B is the food service. And I apologize because, um, in my process of doing this, I really thought for sure I did not do the unaudited portion that I did. So it's a repeat for folks. But, um, so there is, we ended last year with $39,183.37. Um, on August 11th, we entered into a new contract with our new vendor, um, which is Chartwells for this school year. We are also in the interschool agreement with Marlborough Elementary School for this school year. And we also implemented a new point of service system. As part of this point of service system, we are supposed to be able to accept online payments for, um, our families, students and staff can upload money into that. Unfortunately, that portion is still on hold as we're working out some minor hiccups to get it implemented. We did serve meals on August 27th for the middle school, I mean, for the elementary school only, uh, August 28th and 29th for the RAM section of this report. We're still in the process of having our application. We have to apply every year to make sure that all our ducks are in a row before we can enter the claims. And that is still in the process of being reviewed by the state. And once that is finalized, hopefully before the end of the, uh, September, so that we can start entering our claims for September and August, so that we can start getting the reimbursement from the federal government through the state. Are there any questions that the board may have at this time?
How's the transition vendors going?
Um, so it's different. It's just little hiccups in getting used to our facility because the main staff has been here, but, um, it's the new leadership. So it's just, you know, and they have different vendors that supply our food and/or whatever else we need. So it's just getting, getting on the right timeframe to get everything in place.
I think as with any transition, there are bumps along the road.
Yeah, you expect some.
We're hitting bumps. Yeah. You know, nothing that I don't feel is insurmountable at this point, you know.
I think it'll even out.
Yeah, yeah.
What ones are paying, is this supposed to be online now?
I was really hoping this week, but unfortunately it's our legal team who's holding it up just right now. So, um, I'm hopeful that, um, I will have some more information, better information by the end of the week. All right, are there any additional questions? All right, hearing none. 10.5C is, um, the student activity report for the high school and the middle school. And that balance is with Webster Bank. Are there any questions that the board may have on that? So hearing none. 10.5D is the short-term investment fund account. This is both for July and August. We had dividends. We had dividends for July, that totaled, that we reinvested, that totaled $2,006.18. And for August, we reinvested the dividends of $2,012.46. Are there any questions that the board may have? Thank you.
Okay. Brings us to item 11, committee reports, facility safety transportation.
We talked a great deal about the discussion that we had relative to the bonding, and that was combined between the facilities and the finance subcommittee. So unless anybody has any questions they thought of between the time we had that discussion now.
You're done talking?
Is that too long?
All right, policy?
We met a couple weeks ago. You saw the results here. The one policy that we made some real adjustments to, and the other one was just pretty much okay, this is under the state. And then one, okay. But we are getting to the end of the big overall review and.
They're always going to make changes.
There was always going to be new changes, but, you know, getting through that, you know, hopefully every decade or two, process of revamping everything is almost done.
Yeah.
Okay, program and communication?
We did not meet in September.
Okay. And then Carrie is on, she's on facilitative aid, but she was the one who asked me to remind everybody about the conference. Calendar informational items.
Yeah, yeah, so there's, you know, two enclosures, 12.1A and 12.1B. It shows you different events that are taking place at both high school and the middle school. As Brianna said in her remarks, you know, we've got athletics that are kicking up, which is fantastic. We've got dances that are kicking up, which, you know, are fun, depending on your perspective. Saw some rolling of the eyes there. You know, we've got our first half or early release professional development day coming up this Friday. So, yeah, I mean, we are, we are back fully in gear at this point. It's good energy, so. There's no discipline because we're only in September, so we report out what we have.
Pardon, is that happening? All right. So item 15 is we are going to, going to executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. So do we have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing superintendent's evaluation? Further move to invite the superintendent, Colin McAmara, into the executive session? Gabe Marks? Mike Bollier is the second?
Yep, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, thank you.